Eric Alderman, four three, June in Moss. Alderman Moss. Make sure to give you a nice flight. Alderman, four three, can she make this?
Sure.
Thank you all. Philly comment? Anybody have any things that would like to discuss this evening or bring to our attention? I have Rural Fire Association, Gary MacRae down.
Thank you. If the three guys remember that we, you paid your last payment that we talked about, over a hundred thousand dollars. I'm trying to decide what direction we go from this point. We still say we, we have seven hundred thousand dollars that you, that you pay this four hundred, that leaves us three. I don't know whether you want to keep us on the payment plan or what would you like to do? I'm just here finding out where we're going from here.
Gary, I still have, I still have a lot of questions that I feel like are unanswered. And I know you have had discussions with the city attorney. The city administrator, the city attorney.
Where are you getting it?
I just, and I've spoken with the, the city attorney about my questions. I'm still just not clear before the Rural Fire, and I don't want to get too deep into this and take up too much time because I, I need to, I need to do some research here and I need to get some answers. Like before the Rural Fire Board was established, how does the cities, how did the city operate their fire department without any Rural Fire Board?
They paid, they paid for everything themselves.
Right. So my, my question is if Rural Fire Board doesn't have firemen and they have our resources, there, there has to be a, a proper relationship, contractual relationship formed between the two parties so everything is set in stone and fair and right.
I agree with that. That's what the auditor wanted us to do. That's what we're trying to do.
So we're not there yet. We haven't had any meetings discussing the terms of this contract and that relationship as to what the two parties both, what their responsibilities will be in this contractual relationship. So it's just not clear to me, I'm, I'm not. I have a lot of unanswered questions.
The discussion is really not about how it's operated. The discussion is about the money that has came in from the Rural, addressed to Mono City Fire Protection District or Mono City Fire Association and put in the bank.
Right.
And it was kept in a special fund until sometime in this mess.
Before us, if this happened.
Yes, yes. Sometime within this mess. It's been starting to draw out. So what we're trying to do is retrieve the money that went into the bank. You know, and if you give us three hundred thousand dollars and kept one hundred thousand dollars in the bank just to ensure that you still have something there for negotiations or whatever, that's what we're after, is getting our money and then we could sit down with a contract and, and work all this out detail. It's not going to happen overnight, but it has to happen.
It does. And my next question is, so Rural Fire Board dues are fifty dollars?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five? Were they always seventy-five or were they up to seventy-five?
They were up to, they were up to seventy-five. It went, I don't know when.
So, so how many years? I mean, seven hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. So what are we talking about? How many members are there? You know, how do you justify?
Which is really, that's really nothing to do with you all.
Yes, it is because in fact, if, if that is your money, I want to see where it shows that those are the dues, that that wasn't any state, that wasn't any taxes that were put in there to, for, you know, the city fire department?
And I want to see where our money is so I know where it went. That's what we're trying to find out.
Nothing went anywhere. It's there, but we need to know whose it is.
It's pretty simple.
It's, it's not to me in my mind.
But I think where you, where you get confused, that board is just like you all. It's elected by the people. It's its own entity completely. What we're trying to do is separate it like we're supposed to, like the auditor wanted us to do. And if we can start by getting our money that the Rural people has put in, that money has been always set aside. And it, there's where the confusion is. There's always been a gentleman's agreement that the city would take care of the operating expenses and the Rural Fire Protection District would pay for the major expenses. You know, we bought fifty thousand dollars worth of turnip yield. We bought almost a hundred thousand dollars worth of SEVAs. We bought rescue equipment. We bought every fire truck that sits down out of that money. So.
So how can there still be seven hundred thousand dollars there?
Because we didn't do that over a year.
We didn't do that over one year. That's, we've been doing that over the years.
So I, so I guess what I'm asking, and, and please speak up.
Yeah, so, I mean, Gary and I have talked about this. I mean, and my position is what I've always said is that the city and the Fire Board need to go over what, where we're both coming from and decide what that number is. And that's going to require the city getting its book straight and figuring that number out. Because my, I mean, we're, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going off a number that was on a balance sheet a few years ago.
And we could, since, since we've looked at that, since we had that figure, we've spent a lot of time documenting everything that we can to justify where that money is. I mean, if you, if it will help, we could give John that information. But we just need a direction before we make a move.
I, I think that would be whoop us right now at this point is we've talked about these spreadsheets and these numbers, but we've never seen any, you know, sat down with it and discussed them and seen them on paper.
And that's a, and that's a both the same, the same for you all too because, you know, when we started this payment system, we heard at the end of January, we'll have all the finances straightened out and then we can move forward. And here we are, January. We were in the same place we were.
Unfortunately, you're right, yeah.
So, you know, the Fire Protection District is trying to make a big decision on which direction we're going to go with this and I, I don't know. So what do you want, what do you, so I can take it back to our board members, so be sure you keep notes on this because I'm going to want to copy it from now, okay?
Take minutes every meeting.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's detailed because I'm going to need this. Just give me a direction. What, what do you want me to do? And where we're going to go with this?
Well, let's go off the last numbers, the last concrete numbers we have and then you say you guys have been keeping meticulous records. Here, how recent?
We've got documentation.
Okay. Then I would suggest the city administrator with her numbers and her sheets and you with yours, meet with our city attorney.
I'd be happy to do that. Perfect. Well, it'd be, either be me or one of our board members. To go to see where we're at with that.
Because I mean, well, I've told Gary this. My question is, was the city reimbursed for calls that happened over the years? And I haven't seen whether.
It, it never was because that was part of that.
Gentleman's agreement.
Gentleman agreement.
And that's where we can sit down and talk and see.
But we kind of want to do this in steps. We want to see where our money is first. Then we'll talk about, uh, we'll, we'll get the contract worked out and then we have to get a district tax passed. Because if we can't pass it this time, what's going to happen? And please, this is not a threat, but this is just what has to happen. If we can't get a district passed, then we're going to have to dissolve the district because we'll no longer be able to operate. And once that takes place, you know, Palmar's already got a district. They'll come into our city limits and they already got a tax and Chalbina will handle rural and then you'll have your own, pardon, pardon, own one. That's it. And pray to God that never happens, but.
No, the best thing that could happen would be for everybody to get people to support the tax, I think.
That's the only way it's going to, that's the only way it's going to be rezoned.
If the tax passes.
If the tax passes.
I know, but if the tax passes, then you want to deal with the rural association?
No, the rural, the rural association is gone. Everybody, I keep seeing it, it irritates me when I see it on here. Rural Fire Association, Gary MacRae, Rural Fire Protection District.
I understand that, but I'm saying if the tax passes, are you going to quit collecting that money?
Oh, yeah. It'll be a tax. Everyone.
Right. There won't be no need for the dues.
Because right now, right now, the city, the city people are not, they're paying a tax, but they're not, they're not putting seventy-five bucks in for protection within the city limits. And once that tax passes, everyone in the R1 school district, fire protection district will pay the same amount though. And that's what has to happen. So. What are we doing? Meeting? Okay. And before I, I'll, I'll tell you this, I'll take this to the board and, uh, Tuesday night and discuss if that's the direction they want to go and then I'll get with John to let him know, is that okay?
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman greeting, do you want to bring up something at this time?
Oh, um, I've got a few things. Okay. It's, I know it don't look like it, but fast approaching, uh, going to be time to mow. And we are mowing stuff that's due this year. We have to bid it out for three years, so you might look into that to see, get that started, get it posted in the newspaper so we can get stuff going on that because like I say, it's going to be here for too long hopefully. Get rid of this white stuff out there. One of the owners asked me about it the other day, was he going to bid it out again? That's insured, so.
I have to look for that one then.
Okay. That's with the parks, the cemetery and your lakes and stuff. They should all be there together. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Anybody you'd like to bring up at this time? Anyone else? Okay, well, move on then. Uh, financials? Counsel, if you could please look over the accounts payable presented on January eleventh. I just skipped, I'm sorry, I lost my glasses. How about looking at those minutes from twelve twenty-one twenty-three first?
Motion to approve the minutes from that December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from twelve twenty-one twenty-three meeting. Do I have a second?
Aye.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, if you please review the accounts payable. So the highlighted ones are ones that I changed the miles. And what was the reason for the change? Invoices unpaid.
Last item on the payable two.
Account payable two, I wanted to bring to your attention that I had already gone ahead and that February's on there. You don't have to, I've heard that I just had it. I noticed that it was on there. Because I had it in my accounts payable and she scanned it into yesterday, so I was like, I will leave it. So we can make it off or we can make it. It's how we want to.
I have to wait on that till that's completed.
Okay. And even though, so like you see numerous car requests, like the one on there is, it came in today for ninety-two cents. That when we write the checks through, uh, two works, it combines them all as one amount. So I'm not writing the ninety-two cent check, don't worry. So I just want you to be aware of that one.
I know we, I had discussed months ago switching our, um, our services that we contract with Barnard Elevator Service for maintenance and repair because looking through the invoice, previous invoices, they have just, it looks like they're just reaming us. But we were locked into a contract with them until when?
Should be coming up this spring. Should be coming up this spring because that's right when the firm just got hired.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. So probably people.
Okay.
Right about people, um.
Counsel, just whoever's still here, keep that in mind. The elevator services that we currently have are way too expensive and there's a, a company that's out of Quincy that the Baptist Church uses. If there's anybody from the Baptist Church here that can correct me if I'm wrong, um, I reached out to them and they actually reached out to us too, but then we found out we couldn't get out of that contract. But.
When was the contract in?
This spring. I'll check on those, um, those dates exactly so I can make sure that we don't pay any penalties or what it would be to get out of those.
How's it going getting all those skill man receipts from the?
Good. Yeah. I don't have any problems.
It was at one point, so it's gotten better.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, American style and it's easy. It'll be nice to be able to go over a year and get to that year mark with them to see actually what each department is spending in regard to actual usage of vehicle fuel for the departments.
And what about the cell phone? It's been brought up a million times about checking out other venues for our cell service or where are we at on that, ladies?
I asked this morning if we had received what US Cellular was going to be bringing. Yes, we have not received that yet. Tamita has received a few things, but not what we need to show how many cell phones, you know, we have on the contract, the cost. We still haven't received that. I'm not on the actual contract, so they won't give me those details over the phone. And I don't believe, do we have a login for the cellular online?
No, but we have a, um, the police department gave us one of their phones to turn in that they no longer are using. So you have to physically take it down to Hannibal and turn it in. So I'm going to go ahead and take it down and then be able to get it printed out hopefully from them locally. They, they work with us really well.
It doesn't sound like they're working with us really well off the request of this information and you haven't got it yet.
It wouldn't, or are you working with them?
It, it would maybe, I mean, it doesn't matter who I call, I'm going to say.
And since, uh, since our city clerk is going to be bills payable, Tamita, do you think you could give her the credentials she needs to be able to talk to US Cellular? Because I know that's a pain in the butt. My husband and I have been married forever and I wasn't on the, and they wouldn't talk to me. I said, do you want me to pay this? They were, tell me what I. Any other questions about the accounts payable? Yes, Mr. Miller?
Did I understand Alderman greeting referred to a three-year contract from only?
Is it a three-year contract?
Was it benefit paid?
Is it, is it beneficial to do it three years?
It could be something that we revisit since the contract is up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It could be a year.
I feel like three years is a long time, especially if you're getting not the, the service that you maybe expect.
I'm actually keen off of the conversation about the elevator.
Yeah.
It is.
Excuse me?
You talking to me?
Yeah.
No, I was keen off what you said about the elevator service. We're paying a lot of money, we're not getting much in return for our money. When you're locking with a contract with multi-years, although you can get out of it, it may be with the cost that you're going to have to duplicate part of that cost and having contract with a, some other vendor. So if you choose to, it might be worth looking at the value of not doing multi-year contracts. It's something the city attorney, you guys can make an determination about, makes no sense.
Thank you.
On the back of the fuel man? That's only the first part with our department. What about the other departments?
They're in school, fuel man. They use MFA because they all fill up over the C barn.
And they are all, so this amount is, how do you split that up again?
Because it's based off of, on the, the vehicle and driver are assigned to the departments. So actually on the statement, you can see where it says. That's MFA. Doesn't fuel man.
No, but it's, it's.
That's MFA is street.
What about the electrical?
Street. It all comes out of street.
Got a big gallon tank down at street barn and all the utilities filled about it. And then do we fill the electric department?
Yeah. And then splits out, yeah. I'm sorry, I thought you were going to.
No, that, no, that's.
Okay. Does that work?
So are we currently at home on bill?
Okay, any other questions pertaining to accounts payable, counsel? No.
I make a motion to approve accounts payable one, two, and three with the exception of the last item on accounts payable two to be revisited.
All right. Question on the floor and a second to approve accounts payable with the exceptions. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Want to oppose? Motion carries. Two thousand twenty-four liquor license renewals. I updated that form from the one that was emailed to you. Um, we found one of the businesses is no longer in business, so we took them off. So we re, reconfigured the number, um, and we've got actually grand total. It was forty, forty-four fifty, it's thirty-nine fifty now.
So these are what needs to be collected or what has been collected?
No, needs to be collected.
Needs to be collected. So how will we go about doing that? Are we going to send out letters to these individuals or have they been sent out already?
No, they haven't been sent out. That needs to be approved first.
Okay.
That is the same as last year.
All right.
It's not going to change.
Why is senior aren't paid a different rate?
Probably because they're on the grocery. They're into, probably because they're into grocery. I don't know. That would be a Jennifer question. She's booked last year. Good question.
Are these rates set by the state?
No. Those are city rates.
Okay.
Those are city rates.
They've been the same since that was, counsel, in twenty years.
I'm saying it was the same last year.
What do you think about lowering it?
Lowering? Well, I know the price of alcohol has gone up, just talking to my friends. So, you know. So I need a motion to approve the liquor license renewals.
I'll make that motion there.
I have a motion to approve the liquor license renewals. Do I have a second? And a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Audit update? I do not have an update. I haven't spoke with Steve directly. Um, I sent him a message asking for an update, so as soon as I get that, I will post that on the Mono City Municipal News on Facebook.
He's staying in Hannibal.
He's staying in Hannibal.
Do you have an update for us, Tamita?
I have a request sent to him as well. I know he's waiting on some reports, um, from me and I think he was waiting on stuff from Tamita, she might have something for to, um, add to that. But I haven't received a reply back since I requested an update from him.
So he's, but he's waiting on stuff from you gals?
Yeah, he, he requested some reports from me. That's going to take some extra work. That's all he's waiting on from me. But, and I just had to present, um, I think last Friday I asked him where he was at, if he knew anything else going to come back.
I, I just asked that because that was the problem with the last time he was here is he was not getting the information he needed to do his job. So I definitely don't want us going down that way again.
No, what he's waiting on from me is, um, pretty much to take the information, um, from debit to credits to the bank, the incoming outgoing, and put it, um, into a spreadsheet that can be manipulated. So it's a little bit of a time, time process to get that. And he knows that, he knows the trajectory to get all that.
But Tamita, tamper, can we please make sure that is like in the forefront of most important? Because that is what everything the city is hinging on right now is those numbers. We can't get a budget. We can't fill in those holes. We can't make sure that we are in compliance to move forward with some major projects. So this is just very, I can't stress enough, I've stressed it for two years. This is very important. We have to get this done. We have to be at our auditor's beck and call and get him the numbers he needs to get his job done. Because also, the longer he's here, the longer we're going to have to be paying him.
He's not here.
Right.
I just want to make that, he's not paying, like.
Yes.
Not here actively working. He's not home with stuff what we did give him. Do you have anything to add to what I said? Anything to update for Steve or anything?
Yeah. Thank you, yes. So just, just please, just answer everything he sends you, give him everything. It's, gosh, it's just got to be done.
Jennifer, where are you pulling your information from?
Looking for themselves.
You know you could go in and download your bank statements in an Excel file and just copy and paste and then move over the debit to credits and start with that.
Well, um, I don't think it's quite that simple, um, because.
It's easy to start.
Yeah. No, I, that's, I, that's probably what we're going to do. Um, I got in touch with Carl from F and M, um, and I'm getting some help from him on how to get the specific information, specifically the deposits and having that information showing what it is in those, like over a certain dollar amount. Getting the information of, you know, when it's going out, you know, the information of what it is, where it's going to.
Mayor, how often is the auditor visiting here? Is he here like three, four days a week or?
No. About one day a week. With the Christmas break, he. He's, he's got stuff and he's working from home, I guess, is what Tamita just said.
He was in here the night of our meeting briefly and then he was here the next day on Friday all day and I was able to provide him with pretty much the laundry list of items that he needed. So he took a lot of that home, um, and put it in the flash. So he's been working, well, I don't know about the holiday, but he was going to work on it. He had asked me to do one last thing and that was literally do a laundry list of all of the items and all of the, um, things that were incorrect or have been modified and changed to be in compliance, uh, with the state or with the office in regards to work. So that's going to be a pretty lengthy email.
This is audit related, but the IRS, have we heard back from them on any penalties?
Um, that has been put on hold, um, because of the IRS being so far behind on, um, because of COVID, they actually got delayed. He actually indicated to us that if we get any penalties to hang on to them, um, because they're actually making, working on the judgment to see where the penalties are going to be, whether or not they're going to waive all of the penalties and most likely they are during that period of time.
You don't know the dollar now?
No. No, because it's always more. And they're just now getting to some of them.
Is this what this letter is in regards to from the Reserve Department of Revenue?
That's state. That's state only. That's not the IRS. At the Fed level, that's not the Fed level. That's state.
Okay. I, I've said all that I, counsel, do you have anything to add to that? Utilities collection policy?
We were asked by Mayor Hayes to work on revising our utility collection policy and of course, I've been here a short time. Phoebe, she's come in and helped a lot with this. We did provide these earlier via email. It's nothing we want to pass tonight by any means. Uh, we want it to be reviewed and looked at really well and we'd like feedback from everyone to see what your thoughts are on everything. Uh, we did have a meeting with John Russell, um, and Adrian was there the other day as well. And I think it was pretty productive, um, on that and do you have a wish?
We have checked with all the surrounding. We did not pull, just pull these ideas out of our, you know, about the, we talked with Chalbina, we have talked to Palmaro, she of course knows Perry. So we have gotten input from all the surrounding counties. So we have gotten input from all their surrounding counties for how they implement their policies and stuff too, to know where we need to go in guidance to get things where we're not giving people all their money. No other town around here gives their deposits back. So these people stay, if they stay current on their bill, after a year, they get all their deposit back and they have nothing vested in this city at all. Two years, if they're delinquent, they get their money back. But how many people move after two years and then they leave us with two, three thousand dollar bills that we have nothing to even go back and collect on? We, I mean, no other town, when the person dies or they move out, they can have their deposit. Until then, you need to keep it. Every deposit needs to be applied per residence. Not if this person owns five houses and he wants to house all them. Yes, he's liable for those bills, he's going to be, keeps them in his name and the person. But every physical address needs to have a deposit tied to each house.
And that is just one issue.
Yeah, yeah, several, yeah.
That we have found that need, need updated, needs to be concrete. As Mr. McElroy referred to, the gentleman's, you know, agreement. I, I think a lot of things, that's why, that's why we're in this trouble that we're in. A lot of things were verbal and not concrete. And then one person is gone and then, well, she said this, they said this, that's, that's not how you do business, so.
And the, the city, it is not in the business to allow payment plans either, I don't feel for. In our current situation, I, I, you know, I feel like payment plans are probably a thing that need to go as well. We, we don't have the, I mean, we need our funds to pay our bills.
Right.
So that was one of the other things in here that we kind of went over.
Yeah, Monroe City, I mean, I, I come from a nonprofit background. I have a huge bleeding heart, but we're running a business here. We're, we're not a charity and we have to think of it as that. Because when it comes down to it, it's not our money we're dealing with anyhow, it's your all's money. It's taxpayers' dollars and bills have to get paid and people have to be responsible for paying for bills.
And for anything that's uncollected, that could reflect higher rates to everyone in town. So that, I think we need to work on getting past that as well.
So council, if you could, you know, go through this and give your feedback to these ladies and, and hopefully a couple of meetings, we can maybe approve and get this in concrete, a new utility collection policy and put that out there.
That's kind of our goal, we'd like you to look at it and by next meeting be able to vote on it and implement it March first.
Okay.
Yeah, we definitely want to give the residents notice.
Right.
You know, not just leave them out there and change everything on and we want to give them a heads up.
We would have to honor the payment claims that we already have. So it's coming, a lot of them, most of them are six months, so we just started those, a lot of them in December. So you're going to be stuck with those till June. If you decide to redo the budget billing, that's an October issue that needs to be redone. So, I mean, all that would have to play into the timeline of, you know, we'd have to wait this term. But if we get it going and have it implemented in March first, that we can, when the time rolls around, we can have it done.
Have the utility bills gone out for this month?
Yeah, we mailed them out. We were here till nine o'clock last Tuesday, mailed them out by noon on Wednesday. So where they're at from here, we don't know.
We're now in the good graces of St. Louis.
That's part of why we want to change the reading dates too. Because if we change the reading dates, we would read them sooner. And then you would get your, your disconnect notices all tied in the same time. And so then by Mar- by the twenty-fifth of each month, you'd be having everybody disconnected. But then your bills could go right out after the twenty-fifth after you disconnected. Because given everybody mailing stuff and going and having our guys tape stuff on doors and giving them, that needs to all, we can put a sticker on the bills we have. We can use the current bills that we already have and just label that this is your disconnect notice. No other town does put their guys out legwork doing this. When it's time to disconnect, you go. So, I mean, postage is not cheap, your guys' labor is not cheap. Everything is tied up into this courtesy that's in a policy that needs to go.
Yeah, we can't afford to do that anymore. And two courtesy's are over twelve months.
How, how much is currently owed to us and how much of that is Missouri Metal Craft?
Phoebe, you can take this to this guy so she can look at that.
While they're doing that, I would add that the policy streamlines our processes a lot, so. So if we have new employees, it's going to be a lot easier to understand and follow. Our previous policies are really confusing.
Yes.
I mean, I think it worked when you had Gary and Jackie here that have been here all these years to understand it. But to somebody, to a new hire coming in and seeing it, really good luck.
So that's just a positive change, you don't have to do a ordinance on it, do you?
No, we would adopt the new policy.
So I guess the next question is Missouri Metal Craft, are they up to, are they staying with their agreement with us on time?
The current agreement, yes, and then we have a meeting. We actually have a meeting with Missouri Metal Craft and John Russell is working on modifying the promissory note so that we can get that on a regular, they pay us on Monday, they pay us on Friday, they pay us on Monday, pay us on Friday concept. Remember, I sent an email.
Could you read these for everybody? I mean, I, I don't want to be the only one privy to this.
I just wanted you to see, you wanted to know what the total number is?
Yes.
The current, the current total amount owed in utilities right now is seven hundred and seven thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars sixty-one cents. But you need to take off a hundred and two thousand four twenty-two sixty-three because that is your current bill that's not due until January twenty-fifth or whatever.
So six hundred some thousand. And of that six hundred some thousand, I think the major question is what part of that is Missouri Metal Craft?
The last time I looked, it was five hundred.
Over five hundred and some thousand.
Most of it.
How about your grid? A grid, how much?
Five hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred seventy dollars.
So I happen, I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing from the utility collectors that they are not up to date, but I'm hearing from city administration they are up to date. I, I, and I know a month ago, we were discussing this redo in the promissory note. I, so what's the clarification on their situation with their utility bills? Do we need to shut them off or what? This has been him hogging around long enough.
They, they've been sending us X amount of dollars. I don't know if that's.
I mean, are the wires hitting?
Yeah, the, the one, but not the new one that they agreed to last month to get them current on last month's utility bill. They never got current on last month.
And John, I discussed this. John, you know, remember John, you were like, because the, the problem was, they were just paying what the agreement said and you were like, that's ridiculous. This is, it's the understanding that this is in addition to their current monthly bill.
Right, did they pay their last bill?
No, no.
Or?
They have not. Because if you look at their contract, the contract that John drew up and then look at their balance right now, nobody's contract should ever be, I mean, it should always be less than what their bill is now. Well, that contract was three hundred and some thousand or whatever.
Yeah, they put their past due balance on the note, which the council approved. And then this last month should have been paid.
Just like, just like a regular payment plan. You are responsible for your current monthly bill in addition to your payment plan amount.
But they have not.
And they are not.
What would you do for this monthly?
We would shut it off.
You come snuggle up, buddy.
Yeah, five hundred and fifty some thousand dollars. And it goes back how long? How long have they been in arrears? Good God, I think they've been in arrears since I was councilman.
I think we looked at it, we pulled it up.
Yes, they've never been current. Am I wrong?
But then they switched names for a little bit, so that changed the bill and the name.
They switched names or something, something? Yes.
Which I hear, I, I've heard, not from nobody, I mean, that that could be getting ready to happen again. Somebody who owns the buildings says it could be getting ready to happen.
I don't, I don't want people to lose their job, but like I just discussed, we're, we're not in a charity kind of business here. We're in a, we're running a business.
All of these that are listed, are they all on payment plans or anything? I haven't seen that list, I don't know, I don't know what, what's on there, but I, I doubt. Are the ones that came in in a panic and started the payment plans and have they kept up with them?
Most, but not all.
There might be five, six that haven't and so they're no longer on the payment plan. But we can't disconnect due to cold weather rule.
Even though they haven't agreed to the payments?
Because it's in our policy that we, we follow the cold weather rule, we cannot disconnect.
Can we unadopt that?
We can, if they, if we want to, unadopt it, that's what we want to do.
That is one suggestion in here as well.
Right, but then if we, like, we have a couple of residents that, the houses, that if we shut them off, because we know they're not living here, they're not even in Monroe City anymore. But if we go shut their house, their water and stuff off or their electricity, they bust their pipes, are we going to be liable for that?
Turn off the water.
Because we.
Turn off the water, flush the pipes, done.
But we can't go flush their pipes, but, I mean, we can't even get ahold of them. We, we reached out to one today, I mean, going a back way to try to find this person to try to figure out something. But if they don't live here and they don't come to.
Well, we'll post it, put it in the paper, post it.
Yeah, his, his idea the last time was we should have found him on Facebook and got ahold of him.
You put it in the paper, looking for so-and-so and then post it.
They'll figure it out when they freeze.
Okay. Moving on here, do we, what do we want to do? Any other thoughts from council? Alderman Moss, thanks for joining us.
Just let me get a middle of that. If I can get the four hundred thousand, we'll put it in the car protection district, we'll call it in.
Win-win.
So win-win for both of us.
Mayor, other cities, when it comes to a large business that has a lot of the community employed at, will often issue a twenty-four seventy-two hour warning, giving them so many business days to render the account current or be shut off, give them a warning, give us a chance to collect the money? I don't know if that's something.
They had their warnings.
They've got their warnings month after month after month.
They have a written warning saying we will shut you off at this, they, on paper with the, this dollar amount showing. It's a feeling there's been a lot of.
No, we've got to follow the rule on giving them written posting to get it paid. Because if we go shut them off, they're, without following our rules, they're going to have metal freezing up and we're going to be at risk. So we have to follow our rules.
Also keep in mind, if you do shut them off, you might as well write off that five hundred thousand.
Right.
Exactly, that's why we're just kind of walking the line, yeah. So maybe as soon as possible, the conversation needs to be had with them, that their, their current bill needs to be paid in addition to the payment plan and.
We just had a meeting with them, what, two weeks ago?
I told them that. So, we'll get them a call tomorrow.
They should be calling every day.
Okay, we're going to move on from that. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. USDA change order number eighteen.
That is a payment for wastewater treatment facility. It almost finishes Martin construction out. The shelving for the new building is in there. The, the fence, the, the gate. We're just getting down to the, the very end of the project here and it's just smaller amount, I believe. But yeah, Mark Ross is the one that actually put that together and. Yes, everything, a hundred percent of that is the wastewater facility.
I know it's spoken to Mark in the past couple of weeks. What is his estimation on wrapping this project up, George, do you know?
We're, we're all but there.
Okay.
I mean, there's one issue with a door opener, but I mean, we're, we're on a punch list and the punch list is almost complete.
This money, this change order money comes out of USDA, right?
Uh, yes, it does, yes.
So we're still working on those funds?
Right. Yeah, the, the shelving, the way that had to work is the city actually purchased that, but it's going to come back out of USDA funds to reimburse the city. But we have a third, we have a thirty-day due on that bill. So as long as we get all of this done, we'll be able to pay for the shelving with the USDA money and the city won't have to come up with any at all.
Looks like the invoice here, they don't ask for two thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars change order. That, what do you understand, or is it more than?
No, it's more than that. Yeah, because the shelving alone was a lot more than that.
The shelving alone was thirteen thousand.
Yeah.
Do you have a total for this change order?
Is it the fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-three cents?
That, I, I'm not sure. I know that Mark works with Tamika on this and I'm kind of on a backseat situation with it, so.
Your tongue is on the phone.
All right, fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-three cents.
Is that it? USDA loan or grant?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, we're, we're working on the grant funds right now. We, we, there's the loan and then the backside is the grant and we're using only grant money right now. We're trying to get it all used up so none of it is back.
That is the change order is by the.
So we need to send them five hundred forty-one thousand or do we need to send them what, or what do they want?
Five hundred forty-one thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-one cents.
Does anybody have a copy of the change order I can look at? I have no idea what we're talking about here, so.
They cowed that down, it's not out of the general fund. It's out of the wastewater. So they have to request it, draw it down, and then I turn around and write the, either Martin or, or to Plainer, the checks.
We haven't been paying along as we go along?
Yes. This is just the next scheduled payment to be made to them. It started out five sixteen one seventeen. With the addition of the nine thousand two hundred nine dollars seventy-eight cents engineering fees and the equipment, fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety-eight dollars and seventy-three cents, that amount, that payment amount due, which is reflected in the change order from five sixteen to five forty-one. So our total instead of five sixteen one seventeen, it's going to be five forty-one three fifteen.
Five sixteen with the regular payment?
Yes. And we are still within the, the amount of funds available for this project. We are not in overage or anything to that nature.
Who will we pay the change order?
All right, I have a motion to approve the change order and pay the amount of five hundred forty-one thousand three hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-one cents with a second made by Alderman Moss. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, mayor's report. I have a few months left and my main focus is to make sure that everything is wrapped up and tied in a nice little red bow before I pass it off to whomever my, my successor is. So that's what I'll be working on diligently for a few months. Other than that, I just want to reiterate and stress that despite the challenges, it has been a pleasure and it is a pleasure to serve you. So I'm here for the long haul and I'll do everything I can to make sure that the next person will have a few less bumps in the road. City administrators report?
Been working on year-end items. We have BLS, MPUA, workforce development, MRMA, is all doing their year-end reports that we have to be reporting in regards to the different departments. Could be with utilities, could be with what our workforce was in regards to part-time, full-time, things like that. Finished up getting all the stuff and worked with the auditor while the auditor was here. The materials that they, he needed to be able to take back, to be able to do the audit. Still have to finish up one last item for him on. Uh, still have to finish up one last item for him on that. Uh, DMV went through an audit, uh, for compliance. Uh, we're going to get a report and need to work on several items. Uh, one of those items is the camera system downstairs, um, so that we have in compliance for the state, um, making sure that we have cameras on both doors and one on, um, the actual DMV, um, transaction section with the both the computers, and they have to have real, live access. The state Missouri wants real-life access. The current system we have does not do that, so we'll be working on getting that up to date.
Did they put that in writing?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that in our contract with them that we have to provide that at our expense?
Yes.
It is?
Yeah. Yes.
But is there, so they gave the city an audit?
They come in, they come in and do a compliance...
Yeah, but did they put their findings in writing?
They're going to put their findings in.
Okay, they haven't yet.
No.
John, can you put that on the list of the contract that we would, I'll put that down for us to review?
Because you all know where I stand on that, I mean, I...
Worked on getting all of the retirement for all of the previous staff and current staff, current, with security benefits. Proud to say that it's completely done on both sides, the four oh one B, or four oh one A and four fifty-seven. So those are all up to date and ready to go. Um, finished up the election, um, results, and we still need to get that certified and taken over to Monroe County for the election. And then, uh, worked on accounts payable, and the admin committee has asked that I work on a cell phone policy. So I'll be bringing that to the council for the next council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions for the city administrator and council?
Oh, I have a question. How many people do we have, uh, I mean, what's the plan, um, as far as offices? As I understand this, we have Joyce Valoria, Jackie, is city Tomah still here? Or is, or is it just the existing new staff?
Just the existing new staff, other than Joyce. We don't have Jackie, we don't have, um, Joyce, or we don't have the Tomah.
And so what is the plan on Joyce?
Joyce eventually will transition out, once we get, um, the other utility clerk, um, transitioned in and trained. But there's all kinds of hoops that that person has to go through. So they not only have to go through our background check, they have to go through our, um, they have to go through the state's background check, they have to go through their certifications, they have to take all of theirs processed, so it's going to be a little bit on that person.
So our utility clerk will also have to cross-train and be able to fill in at the license office?
Yes.
Our utility clerk is...
No, not, not the net, not the net.
The who, then?
The replacement for Phoebe.
Okay. The administrative assistant position will be the one that will be cross-trained.
Yeah.
So until we get that administrative assistant position filled, and her trained and properly certified, Joyce will be filling in when needed in the license office.
Yeah.
And then, when we hire people, do we make that contention upon bonding?
Yeah, they're all bonded.
Has that always been the case?
While I've been here, it has been. I don't know about previous, but while I've been here, it is. All of them are bonded.
Whoever's handling large sums of money need to be bonded, and we have followed that. I don't know about previously.
Does the ambassador have any kind of liability protection?
Yeah.
Okay, city attorneys' report?
Just hold up a minute, before you're done. Are you required to, since we live in three different venues, are you required, on selection, to take it to each county clerk? So if they can get on the ballot, which means not just some of them, you got Rawls and Mary?
Yeah.
And we've kind of got that moving.
Sorry. I just meant to the county clerks, so...
Uh, just one big thing to make the council aware of. I talked, last meeting, y'all voted about vacating an alley. I talked to Debbie about that. So, in that situation, since we have two private parties engaging in the transaction, they're going to decide on what language they want in that ordinance, and they'll send it to me, I'll put it in our format, and have the council approve it. So, that's what's going on there. Other than that, I don't have anything to add.
All right. Thank you. Uh, council committees, I think we have the minutes. Let's see, what were those minutes? Nuisance Review Board, uh, from January third, they had a meeting. Um, Alderman, Shoemaker, would you like to share anything that you feel is pertinent to share in that meeting?
Well, we didn't have corn. But, uh...
You did, or did not?
Did not. And, I don't know why, but, the weather, I don't know. But our next meeting is on the seventh, at five-thirty.
Seven in the federal?
Yes.
Well, you want some of us to change, I think you need to make that meeting of the whole. Because I'm not going to the meeting, and I don't show up, so what do you want us to do?
Yeah, no, that's not the issue, he's just stating that his committee members aren't coming.
Right.
So it, it might need to be looked at to, um, revisit who we want on that committee, Alderman. And I'd say, do we have any kind of policy about committees? Um, how many meetings they can miss before they're removed or replaced? Do we have anything to that nature? Because...
I don't think so, I mean...
Or is it at my discretion?
It's provisions about attendance, but yeah, you would have discretion to...
Okay, to bring it to council for their approval for removal and appointing, to bring, okay. So February seventh, at, at five-thirty? We might discuss that at the meeting then, Alderman. Because we've, we've got to get going on, um, these nuisances in town. It's, it's a new year, it's time to, uh, get this ball rolling, cool force. Get this town cleaned up a little bit.
But we need to put in the paper some rules.
Uh, building inspector update, though, um... We still have just Carrie Lee kind of filling in with, um, any inspections that need to be done.
Yeah.
That was it.
I mean, just an idea on nuisances, I think I've told some of you this. Uh, there are, if the city had interest in hiring a kind of nuisance police officer who doesn't live here and doesn't, you know, is, doesn't know anybody, um, there are local sheriffs who have told me they have deputies that could be looking for a few hours, uh, to write up tickets. So, just an idea, because I know our police department's busy and understaffed right now, but, you know, if you had somebody from out of town, who didn't live here, didn't know anybody, they're going to be, um, you know, just a few hours a month.
John, could you, could you maybe send, send me an email with any names that you've had this discussion with, maybe, and we'll bring it up, we'll discuss it?
Unless that, I mean, I think we've talked about this in the past, I don't think the PD has a problem with that.
It probably would be more productive to have, have outside eyes that do not know the individuals and don't have...
Right, and they're not getting called to go respond to something while they're working on the nuisances, so...
Planning and zoning report, Alderman Bachans, do you have anything to report at this time? Uh, Parks and Rev, I don't think they have had a meeting. Um, still waiting to hear about the grant, um, that was put in and, and helped, uh, during opportunities, helped us with that grant writing process last year. Haven't heard anything. Economic development, Alderman Bachans? Uh, administrative report, Alderman Osborne?
We had administrative committee meeting at the whole on December twentieth, and, um, we had some discussion about, uh, overtime in the police department, and Tamitha was going to talk with Zach about that situation. Um, we were talking about policy for calling in, that each, all call-ins should go to the department head. Uh, employees need to contact their department head if they're going to be late, sick or absent from work in any way. Employees need to talk to their direct supervisor at least one hour before the shift starts if they're going to be late. Uh, Tamitha was going to send an email telling employees about that, did you?
No, that one.
Okay. Um, and then that brought us to the question of, like, the city clerk. It's been said that she reports directly to the council, and Tamitha also reports directly to the council. Well, during our meeting, we found that in organs that the city clerk reports to the city administrator. So Tamitha would be your voice, we want to sure. So, like, if you were going to be late, or if anybody in the downstairs was also going to be late, you would contact Tamitha an hour before your shift starts. And then we also discussed, and this has been going on, ongoing for a long time, that we needed a list of everything that's in the works, new business and old business, a mini, a mini strategic plan. Uh, we talked about having a dry race board in here with having things on it that need to be accomplished, and then marking them off as they get done. Um, we've talked about that, I think, since I've been on here. And I know you brought it up many times, you called it a parking lot to put things that are in progress, so...
So we might make note that we can add that to the agenda, and maybe, um, if we've got any sort of dry race board or anything. If not, we can reach out to, uh, Tony DeGrave, they've all went to Smartboards and Section, there might be some dry race boards put around in their storage that they're not using.
Um, and then we had a meeting on January fourth that was closed session to discuss a couple of, uh, just, uh, employees, they had situations, no vote or anything was taken at the time. It was basically just discussion on how we wanted to, what direction we thought we may want to go in. And then, outside of that fact, I believe it was at the tw- uh, at the December twentieth meeting, we were talking about hiring Alex Sanders Seibert to replace Phoebe at a rate of twenty dollars an hour to be our administrative assistant, and if that, when can he start? The sixteenth. So if that's approved, then he can start on the sixteenth.
Okay, so, council, do I have a motion to approve hiring Alex, is it Seibert or Seibert? Seibert. Um, he, um, in the interview process, he was, uh, gave a very good interview, and would, I think would be an amazing asset to the team downstairs. At twenty-one an hour for the administrative, twenty, twenty an hour to fulfill the position of administrative assistant? I have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor for the hire?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Tamitha, did you, were you able to reach out to the other, the one lady from, what was it, I believe? Okay, sure, okay.
Thank you, Alderman. Um, city departments, I had this discussion with the city administrator. There are managers' meetings held usually every Monday, every other Monday. Um, so it's just not really important, it's not necessary for us to have all of the departments go through and discuss what they've been doing, if they're doing that in managers' meetings. Of course, if something pertinent comes up that needs to be brought to the council's attention, we will request, we will put it on the agenda, request that that department head be, um, at the meeting for that. So, um, that's all I have for our meeting this evening. Is there any, I don't see anything for closed, do we have any need for closed session, and what would it be? Yes, chief? For a closed session?
No.
No, for right now, okay, yes, sir, come on.
He brought in some quotes for body armor.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. So I got you some numbers on body armor that we were able to find from companies that are actually taking orders right now. Uh, of those, we have the Safe Life FRAS system and the TAG Enhanced. Uh, both of those are level, level three plus, uh, systems. So what that means is it's capable of taking any kind of pistol round, uh, up to a forty-five. After that, it's not good for anything else. Um, on the Safe Life FRAS system, that is multi-hit, level three plus, uh, that is also a special threat regulated. So if you are, uh, greater than a forty-five, or you have three fifty-seven, F and five seven, things of that nature, they will still cover those kinds of threats, as well as AR fifteens, AR tens, and AKs. Big thing with the FRAS system is it also does slash protection, staff protection, electrical current deterrents. So if somebody turned around and got one of our guys with a taser, it would not affect them, as long as one of those probes is in the vest. Uh, does special threat rifle, has full coverage. One of the big things I was pushing for, with going for, uh, a system like this, was we would have fifteen-year expirations. However, the company that does the armor with fifteen-year expiration is no longer taking orders, they got a hold of them, and they do not know how long it'll be before they start taking orders again. So, uh, was advised we would be looking at several months before they start taking orders.
How many?
How many, how many months?
How many vests?
How many vests? Uh, we, we would be doing five.
Is this a price per one, or is it...
No, this, this would be total price. This would be total price. So the five thousand nine hundred would be the FRAS, it would be all five of the guys. Uh, then the TAG Enhanced, that's also with all five, that's the thirty-six hundred. However, there are areas there where we're going to be lacking. I mean, it will cover most of your pistols, but there are going to be pistol rounds that vest still doesn't cover. It has no special threat, nothing to do with, uh, the electronic conduction. So, I, I get where we're at. I would like to request we go ahead and do that two thousand extra, and make sure that we get the best coverage we can.
These are good for five years?
Yeah, these would be good for five years on both of those. And both of them also have a replacement policy, so, and neither one of them, if they're damaged, uh, while on duty, we send it back in, they send us a new one.
Does this include your carriers, or are you going to buy them separate?
No, we will have to do the carrier separate, however, we're just going to do that out of the clothing allowance that we normally get. Uh, everybody just got new pants, new shirts. So for this upcoming year, we should be fairly good there, we'll just go out of the clothing allowance. Uh, and the other thing I will say on the FRAS system, the one that's two thousand more, is it is a plate instead of panels that wrap around, so they do not have to be custom-sized. So with those, we would still be at the point where if we do get a new hire, we can just transfer the plates from, uh, the person going out to the person coming in, and not have to resize them. So that would be another vest in the year that we don't have to purchase if that comes around.
Just need new carriers, right?
Yep, yep, we'll still need new carriers, uh, like I said, we're probably going to be right around the one thousand mark by the time we get all of the carriers done as well, which will be about half of what the current clothing allowance is, so...
Is he a good one for you?
Yes, yes.
How long's it take to get these if you want?
Um, if we go with the TAG Enhanced, those have to be custom-made, we'd be looking at three to four months of production time. Uh, and then if we do the FRAS, those are not custom-fitted, so we'd be looking at, from what they were saying online, uh, three to six weeks.
And I know we discussed last time, um, that you're down a couple officers. Um, you have a salary position of, of what, what was, uh, captains?
No, he wasn't salaried, uh, I forgot how much that was coming in, uh, I believe he was at twenty-two seventy-five an hour.
That hasn't been paid for approximately how long?
Since May.
Just trying to justify the expenditure, expenditure to show that the money would be there for this
We've also got two...
Six thousand dollar purchase for safety gear for our officers.
Well, to me, it's just something you got to buy.
It is. You don't compromise safety, in my opinion.
You recommended a FRAS, is that what you recommended, that?
That'd be my recommendation. Uh, the other thing is, with both of these, they are eligible on the bulletproof best, the bulletproof best partnership grant. So, once that actually opens back up, we can go ahead and put in what we paid here to get that fifty-fifty on, uh, reimbursement split, so...
Put a motion if we go with the Safe Life FRAS vest, is this kind of...
I have a motion and a second for the, the police department to purchase the Safe Life FRAS five, uh, vests. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Thank you, we appreciate that. The other thing is we do have our FCC license for our radios, uh, there for their ten-year renewal. So we do have that in the process. Wireless USA, uh, is taking care of that for us at the moment. The nuclear car is in, it's already been outfitted. We have all life signs, everything else, so it's operational and already in service. We did have, uh, we came to check that out, though, just to make sure before we put it in service and officially took everything, that mechanically it's sound. He said everything looks good. Didn't see any issues other than just a few scratches here and there.
They got, come out to charger yet?
Uh, they should have, if not, I don't know if they did because of the weather, but they were wanting to get up here within the next week to get it done.
They're scheduled for Monday.
You're coming Monday, okay.
Tending weather is...
Yeah, yeah, tending weather. Body cameras, that was another item that we've been talking about. Uh, so we did have two cameras operational and now only have one. Like I said, these things are six, nearing seven years old. So the one we have now will be running twenty-four seven. So just letting you all know, we might have to have that conversation sooner rather than later. But I'll start getting some numbers on those put together. Other than that, that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions?
Thank you.
I appreciate, thank you.
Danette?
I just wanted to say, um, you mentioned the body cameras. Um, Myrma, our Risk Management Association, they do have a grant program that will help cover costs of those. I don't know if that's something you would put...
Yeah, they, uh, they will buy, I believe it's fifty, no.
Seventy-five percent.
It's seventy-five percent, uh, yeah, they'll leave seventy-five percent on, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Alright, at this time, if I can have a motion to go into closed session per...
RS, uh, section sixteen point zero two one, RS seven oh, uh, as provided under this section or by sections of Missouri, firing, firing discipline or promoting of employees by a public event.
Alright, you have a motion?
Second.
And a second? We'll call votes, Alderman Shoemaker, Alderman Saunders?
Aye.
Alderman Osborne?
Aye.
Alderman Bakins?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Conner? Alright, we're now in closed session. You guys can stay put and we will go to the library.
I got to see you again.
Second, open session? Um, no, no votes. No votes were, were made in closed session, so, um, which I think must be discussed. You have a motion to adjourn?
No adjourn.
Second? And a second? All those in favor? Motion adjourned.